Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let's get ready to start the meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Barhu.
Present.
Mr. McLean. Mr. Robinson. Mr. Servants. Mr. Weatherholtz.
Here.
Ms. Washington, you have a call.
Well, good evening. September the 25th, our monthly meeting. Could we have the approval of the minutes?
Yeah, make a motion that we approve minutes as written.
All opposed? Passes. We don't have to call it. It takes only four of us. Any citizens that address the court here will need to sign a green sheet here in order to speak. So we'll now move to the agenda for A. Can we hear from staff?
Item number 4A. New items. Drury Plaza Hotel Site Plan, DEV 2025-296, quasi-judicial hearing.
Good evening. Emilio Ryan, Senior Planner here for the City of Daytona Beach. As you just mentioned, this is item 4A, Major Site Plan for Drury Plaza Hotel. This is a request by Mark A. Cole of Drury Development Corporation to demolish the former alehouse and Havertys buildings, remove existing and previous surfaces, and construct a seven-story, 100-plus-thousand-square-foot Drury Plaza Hotel with 180 rooms and associated site improvements. This graphic here depicts the site location. The site is located west of Indigo Drive between the International Speedway Square Shopping Center to the north and Best Western Hotel to the south. This graphic shows the future land use, which is retail. The zoning for the site is Plan Development General. This is aerial view depicting the existing conditions. The existing uses on the site are restaurant and retail. So a little project description and history. On August 20th, 2025, the City Commission approved the Drury Plan District Agreement, rezoning approximately 4.6 acres from tourist highway interchange, T5, to Plan Development General. The PD proposed construction of the subject hotel with the remaining out parcel reserved for future non-residential development. The site includes the former Havertys Furniture Store and Miller's Alehouse, as I mentioned, both closed, relocated, and are currently vacant. This site plan proposal includes the removal of existing buildings, construction of a seven-story Drury Plaza Hotel with 180 rooms, associated surface parking, drainage, utilities, landscaping, and irrigation. The total lot area is 4.64 acres. The hotel development area is 4.01 acres, and the reserve out parcel area is 0.63 acres. This is a breakdown of the parking on-site for the hotel. The required parking per the PD agreement is 148 spaces. You can see that breakdown there. 0.82 spaces required per guest room, which equates to 148 parking spaces. The proposed parking associated with the site plan is 221 spaces, which leaves a surplus of 73 spaces. This is the proposed site plan. This is the proposed landscape plan. This is the proposed architectural elevation. This is a rendering of the hotel. This shows the rendering in context with the surrounding area. With that, staff recommends approval of the Drury Plaza Hotel Major Site Plan application to develop a seven-story hotel with 180 guest rooms and associated site improvements. A majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required to approve the site plan. With that, staff concludes.
Yeah, and Board, if I can do just a couple of things, a couple of corrections from the staff report, and Emilio has already corrected them in his presentation, and the staff report on page four, you'll see on the, in the chart with the parking, it says for Embry-Riddle, this was actually for the Drury. That's from a previous project. And then also on page seven, the recommendation talks about classrooms office, that was also for a previous project. So the recommendation he just gave is a correct recommendation.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks.
Is there any questions for staff? If there are none?
Mr. Chair. I was looking at your presentation, and I was wondering.
Would you pull the microphone down, please?
I was looking at your presentation, and I liked the hotel. I thought we were, I didn't know we were going seven stories. I thought the last one they brought in was three. No, it was seven.
The PD had seven stories.
What, where's the restaurant gonna be?
This is for the hotel right now, but that reserve out parcel is for future non-residential development. But right now, we're just looking at the hotel site plan.
Oh. And could you go back to where the hotel?
Joe, if you could pull, there you go.
Yeah. Keep going. Go back. Go back. Yeah, I was looking at that. Is the out parcel big enough for the restaurant?
Let me get back to the site plan.
Yeah.
Well, this is landscape plan. You can see there on the bottom right of this graphic, there's a hatched area that is the non-residential out parcel that I described.
And the applicant can address the future plans for the property and what their, what their intention is.
Okay. I thought, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we hear from the applicant?
Hey, everyone. Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole, One Daytona Boulevard, here for the applicant. I've got a whole football team of people back here that can answer any questions you guys have. We did have, and thank you, Emilio. And Emilio, not only in his presentation, but in his report, does all the things you guys expect, make sure this site plan is consistent with the comp plan, meets the Land Development Code requirements, and in this case, meets the PD requirements. And we thank you guys again for recommending approval of this PD. And I think you saw pretty much all the exhibits previously when we did this a couple of months ago. I promise you'll be coming back fairly soon with the site plan, which sometimes that takes a while. In this case, not so much. These guys are, as we say, on the gas and ready to build this thing. So if you have any questions, technical or otherwise, business-wise, we've got the Drury Hotel guys here, and we've got Zep Cohen and Associates to answer any technical questions. And Milverton, I think, to make sure we understand the compartments, what we're doing here, the restaurant will come in the future, once we settle that. Some of the parking will be shared, as you saw in some of the exhibits and we talked about. We had a pretty good conversation with the PD about all the nuances here, so if you want to talk about any of those, we can too. But I think we got everything pretty well settled, and I think it's gonna be a great project. I hope you guys are gonna be, you're supporting us.
I think so, too.
I know, speaking for myself, you know, it's the entrance way to Daytona. And, you know, some of the buildings there are a little rough, and I think that it's going to look nice once we get it started and completed. And so, myself, I look forward to it.
Good. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? About the out parcel? What are they gonna do with it until they put the restaurant up there?
That's a good question. All right. Jared, you want to talk a little bit about that?
I mean, it's a beautiful hotel from the, you know, depiction, but.
Sure. Good evening. For the record, Jared Barbie, 13075 Manchester Road, St. Louis, Missouri, Director of Development for, from Drury Development. Appreciate you guys having me tonight. We were with you just a few months ago in June, talking about the PD. As it relates to the first phase condition of the restaurant parcel, the intent is to stabilize that area, seed it, grow grass in that area as we pursue users. The long-term goal would be to maintain ownership of that lot area, secure a new user, restaurant user, who has a plan that will come before staff in a subsequent site plan approval process, and then hopefully someday build out the restaurant.
So you're gonna do something like landscaping and stuff around the part?
Around the perimeter. The perimeter buffers are incorporated into the landscape plan as a part of the PD standards that were outlined in the.
Got you. Thank you. Looks good.
Sure, thank you.
Is there any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three minutes, zero seconds.
Three minutes.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grammy Avenue. Yeah, I went, when I went to North Carolina, I stopped at a Drury Hotel and walked around. It's a beautiful building. Two things. One, I would ask that the planning department go through this as fast as possible. Because time is money, all right? We have a tendency to kind of drag it along. Since they're doing everything in-house, and they've done it like 10, 20, 30 times before, they should know what they're doing. So I'm asking staff, for you to recommend to staff, that they approve it as fast as possible. Secondly, which doesn't pertain to them, but pertains to what's happening on the beachside, I don't think you all realize, when you pass these photographs and whatnot, what the end result is, all right? The hotels are starting to put the garbage of their property, not physical garbage, but I mean ugly things that they don't want anybody to see. Normally, you hide, they put it on A1A, all right? All the electrical boxes, all their trash cans, their water recycling, all of that gets sucked right in the front. I'm right in front of the Daytona Grand, all right? You see all that garbage sitting there, all right? Then if you go back a half a block, you see all their air conditioning units sitting up above it. They don't hide anything. What would normally be hidden isn't hidden. They're telling the Renaissance. They put all their garbage on the side of the building, which faces A1A. So eventually, they did hide it with a fence, but basically, you can see all the garbage right above it. So we're having a tendency that it is not, how do you say it? Not city-friendly, all right? Because generally, you don't put your worst element in your front door, which is what our hotels are doing. You don't see that because you see the rendering. When I walk or I look out my front door and I see this constantly, and it will be there for 20, 30 years, it's why? All they had to do was screen it. All they had to do is, you know, this or that, which is what I think, or what I'm asking you to do, is look at that a little bit more, where they're going to be putting the offensive parts of their property. Everybody has garbage cans. Everybody has whatever. But I'm just asking you to be a little bit more, so if you go down A1A, take a look at the Renaissance, take a look at the Daytona Grand, take a look at the new apartments. They put all their four feet, four or five feet to the sidewalk, and all their trash is in that four or five feet. So when it happened several times, it's time to make a comment. Thank you.
I want to comment on that. John, I agree with you. I think that the Daytona, you know, one of the things with waste management, there's always been a problem, to have an area to get in, have the garbage trucks come in and out on a busy road. But I think that the city should look forward into something with compactors. You know, it's not sharing, it's the rollout for the truck itself has always been an issue. When you have limited space getting in, you know, it's always a problem. But I think for all the new developers and everything, I think that they should look into compactors, get with waste management, and see if we can do the area, and then pick a time where they come in and pick up. It doesn't have to be, you know, an eight o'clock rush hour. Something that the city should look into also on the collections and the delivery, especially on A1A. You're fortunate, you're kind of off the beaten path here, or the main artery. But it's something to look into, and I think that it enhances the program, or your building, and it would be easier to maintain. I'm not sure of the cost differential, but I know in some of the cities that I've been involved with, especially with tight parking, you know, it's always been a great issue to have, so.
And we can talk in greater detail on this later on. I know their project, we did review it for the, for the garbage pickup and where it was gonna occur, and made sure it was gonna occur in a safe location and in a screened location, too. So for this particular project, that was addressed and taken care of, but we can talk about the garbage later on.
Thank you. Is there any other, anybody else? Let me see, can somebody make a motion?
Yep. Make a motion that we approve site plan, major site plan approval, DEV 2025-296, Drury Plaza Hotel.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed, 100%.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item?
Before we go to the next item, I'd like to know who seconded the motion on the first item.
Mr. Robinson.
Okay. See?
And item five?
Item number five.
4B.
4B.
Or 4B, rather, I'm sorry.
Preliminary plat, final, preliminary and final plat process, LDC, text amendment,
This is kind of a technical one.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and do a presentation on this, and then if you have any questions, we can go over those. Dennis Merzick, Planning Director for the city, so I'll just throw that out there. This is a request by Growth Management and Planning Department, Planning Division, to amend Articles 2, 3, and 7, and Appendix A of the Land Development Code, to update and modify preliminary and final plat processes, and to implement Senate Bill 784 to comply with requirements of Florida statutes. And I think I had in our staff report a couple of times, I'd said Article 11. It wasn't Article 11, it's Article 7, so if you saw that, I didn't want to confuse you. So the Senate Bill 784 addresses the plat approval process and what the requirements are for the cities. Plats are a, based on our definition in our Land Development Code, a map or delineated representation of a subdivision of lands in accordance with the requirements of Florida statutes, Chapter 177. So this has to do with creating separate lots, parcels for future sale. It also includes easements associated with any infrastructure that would be in place. The current LDC approval requirements for a plat, preliminary plats, as you, as you know, they come before the planning board for a review, and then they go on to the City Commission for approval. Final plats are City Commission approval only. That was the process. So why are we doing this? Because of Florida SB 784. That was signed by the governor into law, and it took effect July 20, excuse me, July 1st, 2025. It required an administrative approval of all plats, which means city staff. So instead of going to the City Commission or the planning board for review, it stays with city staff, and city staff does the review and does the approval of the plats. So it does remove the planning board and the City Commission from the plat approval process. With that, we had to change our Land Development Code because we have the processes in place in our Land Development Code that would take it to the planning board and City Commission, so we had to make those changes to the code. The changes in the code represent what we needed to do to come into compliance with Florida statutes. So some of the things we did, and I won't go into too much detail, but here to answer any questions that you might have. We amended Section 1, or Section 2 of the Land Development Code. That's your attachment A and B. This is the administrative authority. This is, takes it away from the City Commission, and it gives it to city staff to review and approve. And amended Articles 3, so that's your, your attachment C, D, and E. Again, removing the City Commission, replacing it with city staff, modifying the plat submittal requirements in accordance with Florida statutes, and then also modifying the specific procedures for the plat's approval. Land Development Code gives specific directions when somebody submits an application, how it goes through that process. We had to remove the City Commission and install the city staff as being that authority to do that. We amended Article 7, just a small section. We added the, the construction plans as part of the approval. That's something that's typically done by staff with the final plat. And then we also amended Appendix A. That's the submittal requirements, the general submittal requirements for each application, so we had to modify the plat's submittal, submittal requirements. While we were doing this, we made a couple of other changes while we were in the, in the code, and just, just as a cleanup, a couple of things, such as, we now have an electronic submittal process. Our Land Development Code didn't, didn't have that before. It anticipated, it anticipated paper submittals, did away with that, so we wanted to make sure we took that out of the code. So it's an electronic submittal now. We did some spelling and formatting changes, and then we removed what's known as a concept plan that had to be submitted before a redevelopment board. That process was removed from the Land Development Code when we brought the new code in, into, and approved it in 2015. So we don't even have a process for that anymore, yet that was still in the code as far as what somebody would need to submit if they were gonna do that. So we wanted to take that out and clean it up as well. So it's a little bit of a cleanup of the code. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the request to amend Articles 2, 3, and 7, and Appendix A of the Land Development Code, to update and modify preliminary and final plat processes, and implement SB 784, and comply with the requirements of Florida statutes. Majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the City Commission. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for first reading on November 5th, and for second reading on November 19th, 2025. I will tell you that even though the code has not changed yet, we are following state statutes for all of the plat processes, so. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a, what if we don't recommend it? What happens?
You, you don't have to. It's gonna go to the City Commission, and the City Commission will act on it, so.
I was just wondering why you brought it to us and not just?
Well, well, because it's, because it's a Land Development Code text amendment, and we have our requirements in our Land Development Code. Whenever we change the code in our, the Land Development Code, we have to come to the planning board because you're the local planning agency.
That's right.
To make a recommendation to the City Commission.
But you don't have a choice.
It's a requirement for us to do, so we just follow in the process.
Following procedure.
Okay, is there any other questions? Should we take a vote?
Motion.
Or a motion, rather.
Motion.
Make a motion that we approve LDC text amendment, preliminary, and final plat process, DEV 2025-468, amend Articles 2, 3, 7, and Appendix A of the LDC.
Second.
Okay, is there any?
No, we gotta vote.
Oh, we gotta vote, yeah. Well, I guess it helps. Okay, can we take a vote? A physical vote?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed?
Passes.
What was it? Did you vote, Mr. Chair?
Pardon me?
Did you vote?
Yes, I always vote.
Oh, okay, but I didn't hear you say yes or no.
Well, you know, I don't say it loud all the time. I'm a very quiet man. If there's anything else?
Right on the list.
Should we go down through the list? Well, the other businesses, downtown, redevelopment.
We don't have a representative.
No representative. Midtown, redevelopment.
We did meet. It was a brief meeting, and got a report from several committees. Good meeting.
Beachside redevelopment, we haven't had our meeting yet.
Oh, so you're gonna represent there?
Yeah, I'm representing.
Okay.
Affordable housing. Any public comments?
Mr. Nicholson, I'm sure.
I thought you only get three minutes of me there.
Mr. Nicholson, you got three minutes.
What else is new? John Nicholson, 413 North Grammy Avenue. I don't believe many of you read the paper anymore, but about. Two weeks ago, on a Sunday, they had a huge article, seven pages, on the Clyde Morris Landing. About two months ago, three ladies from Clyde Morris Landing, seniors, showed up at the City Commission complaining about the condition of Clyde Morris Landing, all right? Apparently, it's falling apart. It's two years, three years old, and it's falling apart. Plumbing, walls, you name it. The outside looks perfect, the inside not so. I've not been inside, this is just what they're saying. The article goes on to say that there's problems, all right? City staff went out. They haven't reported yet to the public. They usually come back and tell you what they saw. So Dinet's on it, Stacy's on it, but my comment is, I ran into a city commissioner from another city, and his comment about our building on the west side is, you're building all that junk, and it's gonna come back to bite you in the butt, all right? Apparently, our construction is not of best quality, is what he's saying. I don't know. I've always built, and no cement, cinder block, all right? Everything out there is wood, all right? Yankees do wood. Most of the people coming down to Yankees are used to wood. I have no idea what the quality is, but I want to let you know that this is happening. Your affordable housing apparently is not affordable housing. It's an extension of our hut housing. So whenever you see affordable, and people keep pushing affordable housing, it's not affordable. They keep telling you it's teachers, policemen, firemen. The article shows one man doesn't pay a dime rent, another woman $2.30 a month. That's really not affordable housing, that's hut housing. So I don't know whether the builders, knowing that it's gonna be hut housing for the City of Daytona Beach, are cutting corners, which might happen, I don't know. They're supposed to have the same quality, but if you're getting $230 a month rent, I can't see you putting a lot of money into it. So I just want to let you know that it's out there, so when you have affordable housing, you may want to look a little bit more deeply into it, and know that the city is not doing affordable housing, they're just extending hut housing further and further west. Thank you.
I'm gonna comment on that. Probably, John, you know, about, probably about 35 years ago, they started building frame, or what they call stick housing, you know, multi-story. I know in Orlando, it started. The thing about, I agree with what you're saying, you know, I'm a brick and block guy myself, but as long as it meets code, that's the important issue. You know, we have certain standards in our code that they have to meet, where it's safe. You know, we have certain standards in our code that they have to meet, where it's safe, fireproof. It still has to have all of the safety procedures of any other building that's built here. I agree, the life expectancy of it is not as long as brick and mortar, but they do, they do meet the requirements. I did read the article in the paper. You know, a lot of it was interior problems. Like you say, some of the residents had some problems with parking and different issues. But it's not hut housing. It might be subsidized, you know, by the government, you know, and the builders now, the city, I'm going to say a plus for having some type of affordable housing in their units, so many units that they say are affordable. And that's where these come from. As far as out on the west side, they're building a lot of them. They seem to be occupied, and I think we're gonna see a lot more in the coming future. But I just figured I'd make that comment and kind of leave it at that. Is there any other discussions? Board? Last chance. I think that this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.